Hey guys.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee, September 9th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aggio.
Here.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dais.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Larve.
Here.
Ms. Pereira. Mary Coogan.
Here. Salute to the flag. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input. Okay, we have a number of citizens that want to speak tonight. We are going to respectfully request that you honor the three-minute rule. It'll definitely give everybody the same equal opportunity to talk, and we're going to lead off with John Andrade, Prospect Street Lead Teacher. Three minutes, John.
Hello. Okay, Theodore Roosevelt said, "The best executive is the one who has sense enough to pick good men to do what he wants done, and self-restraint to keep from meddling with them while they do it." I'm going to use this logic to express my concern regarding the proposal to increase the number of classes that high school lead teachers teach. We've stated outright that with four classes, the job is impossible. Any teacher at the high school would tell you already that two preps isn't enough time in the day to complete their responsibilities already, and adding leadership responsibilities on top of that limited timeframe is just not imaginable. We've talked about the necessity for our flexibility, the time needed to address issues and put out fires, and the work it takes to coach, and your proposal has hardly budged, and I want to talk about that. You said if high school teachers teach the same as elementary and middle school leads, it would restore equity to the position, and then I think you rethought that stance, which I really do appreciate, because the stipend for high school leads was increased, given that we teach the extra class. Your newly proposed stipend is an improvement, but it's still kind of a huge pay cut, just to be clear. I'm open to showing you my math at the next bargaining meeting, but for now, just know this: I'm mentoring three people this year. Mentoring three people will earn me about three-quarters of your newly proposed stipend, meaning for me, simply consulting with three people is almost as lucrative as leading a department of fifty. If you include paraprofessionals, it's a department of over a hundred. The math there, it doesn't make sense, and truthfully, in the end, no number you propose is worth our valuable time. We just want the prep to do our jobs. The proposal, the claim about equity, the adjustment to the stipend, it feels like a thinly veiled attempt to cut costs and circumvent the fact that we aren't paying a wage that fills classes. Sure, if this goes through and the lead teachers taught the extra class, like eight more classes at the high school would be filled, and that's great, sure, but the con is that you'd lose us, nearly all of us. I've checked. This proposal has forced us to have that difficult if-then discussion with our deans and supervisors, and that's a shame, because we're all passionate about being lead teachers at Durfee. Do I think we should get paid more? Like, yeah, duh, right? But did I apply to be a lead for the money? No, not at all. I like helping my department head, because I think she's an excellent boss to work for. I like helping my staff, because special ed is challenging, and it's also very rewarding. And I like helping my school, because I think Durfee has a huge amount of potential, and we're getting there. We've made so much progress. Crippling our lead teachers like this is just a step in the wrong direction, and I think it would reverse a lot of that progress. To close this out, I'll add that in many districts, deans teach a class, and this hasn't been done in this district for a very long time, because we recognize the importance of having, and this is how the kids say it, "time to cook." So please also give me and my leads at Durfee High School time to cook. Please recognize the time that is required for lead teachers to implement strategies that will move the needle, the time that's needed to push into tough classes to offer support, the time it takes to coach new staff, and the time it takes to do our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker is from Warwick.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Helen Schumaker, Warwick, Rhode Island. Three minutes, please, Helen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Helen Schumaker, and I am an ESL teacher and teacher leader at CUS. I want to describe my financial situation to you. My take-home pay is $4,104.28 a month. My mortgage is $2,289.26 a month. I try to put in extra on my principal, usually around $200. This leaves me with $1,615.02. This is used for medical appointment co-pays, medication co-pays, gas for my car once a week, because I travel from Warwick every day, gas for my house, electricity, water, credit card bills, necessary repairs, and more. When I can, I try to put some in savings. I haven't even mentioned buying things for my classroom, because there are things I or my students need that, as far as I know, the district does not provide. Timers, vinyl to cover my door's window, a rug during my elementary days, binders, dividers for the binders, good whiteboard markers, and not the ones that last a day or don't erase well. And so much more. Not to mention many language dictionaries that I made sure were MCAS-approved, because for the longest time in my first nine years here, the district did not provide them for our multilingual learners. Last year, last year, we finally got district purchase dictionaries. And groceries. Sometimes I can pay for them, but not every time. My parents have been a blessing and helped me those times, but that is not the case for everyone. Not to mention unexpected expenses. I currently have $451.05 in savings and $21 in checking, for a total of $472 between both. Just this weekend, my car needed repairs for almost $2,400. I couldn't pay it. My father did to spare me credit card debt, and something is still wrong with it, and I again will be unable to pay it without using my credit card or relying on my father. I'm living paycheck to paycheck, and this is step ten with a master's with a teacher leader stipend. I am, I am single and don't have children. There are plenty of single parents or households in which only one adult can work. I cannot imagine supporting a family on only my salary. I am only one of roughly 900 members. You may think my situation is unique, but it's not. This is my 11th year in Fall River. Despite the insufficient pay, I stay because right now I can. I hope to marry and have children someday, and my salary will no longer be just enough. But for now, I stay and want to stay for the child who ran to me the first day of my second year teaching at Henry Lord under Dr. Curly, screaming, "Miss S., you didn't leave me," like so many others do. But I guarantee you, I could get a job anywhere else because of the high demand for ESL. Just look at Durfee. And because I am told by others, if you teach in Fall River, you can teach anywhere. Teaching in Fall River? Teaching in Fall River is a badge of honor for the wrong reasons. We should not be known as "that district where teachers simply survive," but "the district where teachers thrive," and you have the power to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker? I'll need a motion to waive the rules from Middletown, Rhode Island.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Carrie Devine, Sampson Lane, Middletown, Rhode Island.
This is my 29th year of teaching. I began in 1995 at the age of 24. I am now 53 years old, which means I've officially spent more than half of my life in the classroom. I can honestly say that I have as much passion for what I do now as I did almost 30 years ago. But I'm angry, and I am frustrated, which has led me to want to share some facts here today. Fact: I deeply care for my students, as most of us do. I work tirelessly to provide them with the support they need, both academically and personally. I am at once an educator, mediator, crisis manager, data analyst, and care provider. Fact: I am one of the most important adults in many of my students' lives, as are my colleagues. Fact: What we do is valuable. The young people of Fall River are extremely valuable and deserve every opportunity to realize their best selves and contribute to their city and society. Undeniably, their education is a huge part of sending them on this path. We educators encourage and challenge our most capable future leaders to capitalize on their strengths in order to give back, to solve problems, to lead the way. We also support and uplift our most struggling students and help them to believe in themselves and see potential where they may not be able to see it on their own. I repeat, what we do is valuable. They are valuable. Harsh fact: Fall River is losing teachers. My department has lost too many incredibly talented and caring professionals to other higher-paying districts, and this experience is repeated in departments and schools throughout Fall River. Harsh fact: Fall River School District is understaffed. It is insulting to we professionals with required master's degrees who work hard to develop expertise in the art and science of education to think we can fill those voids with uncertified, unqualified adults or platforms. In order to just have a body in the room. Fact: Our kids deserve more. We teachers work in service of them and their futures, and allowing the schools to be understaffed and the students to be underserved is not living up to the unspoken but understood promise of public education to support and uplift all of our young people. Individuals, institutions, and societies invest time, money, and in conclusion, and energy into what they value. We assess the worth of something, then make an investment if we deem it deserving. This district has apparently assessed the value of its teachers and deemed us not worth the investment. And I would argue, by extension, they are devaluing the youth of this city by not doing everything in their power to attract and hold on to qualified educators. May I, one little, one little ending?
Next.
It's very important, a little tiny. Okay. I had, I have had the privilege of working at Durfee for 10 years now, and I can say that I love my students. We at Durfee love our students. And it weighs heavily on my heart and my mind that this amazing group of dedicated professionals has to plead for wages that will help the younger teachers move out of their parent homes and the other teachers to comfortably support themselves and their families. Thank you for your time.
I need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker is from Fairhaven, Mass.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Nikki Jacobson, Judson Drive, Fairhaven. Three minutes, please, Nikki.
Good evening. A lot of people have been talking about the importance of teacher retention and open positions, but I would like to discuss a slightly different issue: the respect of veteran teachers. I just began year 19 at Durfee. This means, in a traditional 35-year timeline, I am in the second half of my career. Over the past 19 years, I have taught inclusion, classes of multilanguage learners, college prep, accelerated courses, and advanced placement. I have taught core classes at the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade level, as well as electives. Since the adoption of the new evaluation system, I have received nothing less than proficient, and have earned exemplary ratings in standards one, two, and four over the years. I know I have been a dedicated professional, and based on my evaluations, I am considered an asset to my school and my department. Yet, for almost 20 years of dedicated service and credits beyond a master's degree, which I paid for myself, I do not feel that our current pay scale respects that level of hard work and commitment. For 19 years of service, I get a longevity stipend of $1,000, distributed over my paychecks. When you do the math of 180 school days, this is $5.55 a day before taxes. Every year, there is a new initiative, a new district or department focus, a new goal. So after almost 20 years, I am still spending time reworking old lessons and creating new ones, editing assessments and modifying them for different needs. I work with and guide my younger colleagues. I participate and contribute to my PLCs and common planning. I am still constantly trying to better myself professionally to best serve my students. I care greatly about my students' social, emotional needs and academic success, but why am I taking time away from my own family to do this in a district that shows such little respect for veteran teachers and their experience? Where is the respect for teachers dedicated to staying in the classroom? Where is the respect for attending professional development over the summer voluntarily? Where is the respect for staying after school an hour most days and taking time away from my family on the weekends for grading and planning? Is the expectation that I simply copy and paste year after year until retirement? Where is the compensation for continued personal and professional growth? Yes, we need to attract strong teachers and fill all positions, but we should be doing that in part by showing them how fulfilling a career in Fall River can be. Where is the message that veteran teachers are still here because they feel valued, appreciated, and their pay reflects that? By comparison, my husband teaches in a different district and has been teaching five years less than me, yet his base salary this year at the same level of education is $15,000 more than mine. I feel stuck. I happen to teach a content that does not have the number of vacancies as other contents. There are very few job openings for me in neighboring districts. Believe me, I've looked. So my question to the school committee is, do you want veteran teachers to feel stuck? Do you want teachers who are uninspired? Do you want younger teachers to get the hell out of Dodge before they too get stuck? Or do you want veteran teachers to feel such a high level of respect that we are motivated year after year to better our craft and strive to be the best versions of ourselves for our students? I love my students, but that love doesn't pay my bills. So please, show some respect for those of us who have dedicated our careers and lives to working directly with students in the classroom. Approve our pay raise and increase longevity, or you might just start to get a lot of warm bodies with a cold heart in the classroom.
Next up, Dawn Gomes, Alden Street, Fall River.
Good evening. Paraprofessionals are often called the backbone of the classroom. We play a critical role in supporting students' learning and well-being, yet too often, we feel unappreciated, overworked, and underpaid. This is especially concerning as our district continues to struggle with retaining staff, especially for our sped classrooms. In special education, paras work closely with students who have mild to moderate disabilities. We supervise individual and small group work, assist with behavior management, and ensure that the classroom remains a safe and supportive environment. We are essential in making classrooms more inclusive. Many of us love our jobs because we know we are making a difference in the students' lives. However, despite our dedication, the low wages are driving us away from the district that is already facing serious challenges. Passion alone cannot pay our bills or support our families. We're told that our work is essential, yet all of us are underpaid, undervalued, and living on the edge of poverty. For the hard work we do, we deserve better. The shortage of paras and teachers in special education is already impacting students. The special needs department has the highest turnover rate in the district, and is also in the greatest need of teachers. Positions that have been, have been, I mean, sorry, positions that have remained unfilled for the last three-plus years. This continues to be an ongoing issue, and even many students without the services that they are entitled to under the Disability Act. In our schools, paras work with some of the most highly-needed students. As more educators leave, the demand for special education support continues to rise. Our most vulnerable students may have violent outbursts, physically assault others, throw objects, or even attempt to escape from classrooms. These situations require us to be physically and mentally prepared every single day. We continue to show up for our students and families we serve because we deeply care about their success. But it's becoming increasingly difficult to work in a district that doesn't value or compensate us fairly. How much longer can the system ignore our voices, pay us insufficient wages, and fail to provide the support we need? I urge the committee members to visit our schools and special education classrooms to see firsthand, to see firsthand the value that paras bring to the district. I also call on the district's leadership to focus on what truly matters: the well-being and success of our students. Compensate us fairly for our dedication, our hard work, and the unique skills we bring. As Whitney Houston once said, "I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside and give them a sense of pride to make it easier. Let their laughter remind us how it used to be." These children need us. What will happen if the educators continue to lead for other school districts? What will happen to students who have had substitutes or parareducators leading the classroom instead of a certified teacher? It is time to value all educators and ensure that our students receive the support they need. These issues must be addressed. Students in Fall River School District, particularly those in special needs population, have endured too much instability and lack of consistency to support from our district. Thank you.
I need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker is from Somerset.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Courtney Defradis, Lee's River Avenue, Somerset.
Good evening. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the contract negotiations with the FREA. I have been serving as a silent representative, but I'm not sure I can stay silent any longer. I have, I have been to all of the bargaining meetings with the exception of one. I felt like things started hopeful, but quickly I realized that the hope was one-sided. The teachers of the FREA went in with hopes to come to an agreement, making working conditions better for both students and teachers, but I quickly realized we seemed to be the only side that had that mindset. Every proposal set forth by the FREA has been to help with retention, recruitment, and overall student success. The school committee has failed to agree or appropriately counter many of the proposals, making the bargaining meetings less and less productive as time goes on. On top of the productivity seeming to diminish, we have faced more and more disrespect, and frankly, downright belaying from a particular member to agree to a contract that we don't deem fair. Last time I checked, Fall River had a zero-tolerance bullying policy. I have never seen someone speak to a room full of professionals in such a disrespectful manner. The more meetings I attend, the less respected I feel as a professional educator. The teachers that show up every day, the teachers in this room right now, are here because we care. We are here because we love our students. We are here because we care about our profession. I can promise you, it is not the pay that is keeping us. After the challenges I faced last year, many people thought for sure I would not return. But here I am, stronger than ever, and I refuse to leave until I feel like I did everything possible to make things better for my students and colleagues. It wasn't the pay that kept me. It wasn't the benefits or the lack of parent leave. It was the students, family, and staff I form relationships with over the last eight years. At the end of the day, I remembered my why. I encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
All right, guys. All right, guys. All right, next. I need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker is from East Wareham.
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Wendy Regal, Bittersweet Lane, West, I'm sorry, East Wareham, Mass.
Is this good? Hello, my name is Wendy Regal, and this is my ninth year as a science educator in the Fall River District. I was employed at CUS for five years prior to transitioning to Durfee in 2021. During this time, I've had the opportunity to work with many amazing educators and administrators. However, I've noticed a clear imbalance with the respect given versus what is expected of us from the school committee. Firstly, the elephant in the room: pay. Let's be honest, it's low, and the longer you stay working for the district, the larger the pay gap becomes. Just the other day, a teacher from the district shared online that they're worth $17,000 more for the exact same position and time. But I'd like to shift away from the clear disparity in comparative pay and address some other factors. Here are three examples of how I feel that we have been undervalued. Can you guess how many times I've called HR to get a single response about a question I had? Well, to be honest, I couldn't tell you. I've called five times, left messages, and I've yet to yield a single response since July. I watched a first-year teacher crying out of frustration because our scripted lessons were not working properly, and the only response from our science district head was that she wasn't doing it with enough fidelity. No, no compassion, no support, but all the blame. She was a brilliant educator and took her talents to a new district after two years of such treatment. Administration and social adjustment counselors have lunch and hall duties, effectively taking them away from being able to support educators, the students, as well as other job requirements. Additionally, student conditions for learning are not being met. I implore parents to ask their students if they have a teacher. I promise you that some of your children do not. At Durfee, there are some students that have spent their first two weeks with only a substitute or sitting in the cafeteria. This is not giving your child the educational opportunity that they deserve and preparing them for their future. Be angry. I know we are. Within the nation, there is a teacher shortage. There are jobs open all across the state. We don't live in a bubble. We know salary expectations and general working conditions within other districts. There are many districts within a 30-minute commute of every educator that will provide them with a better quality of life, both in and out of work. It is your long-term teachers that serve as mentors, help and support your green employees on a daily basis. If you lose them, the conditions for learning will decline. The FREA speaks for the educators, and there has been a lot of unwillingness to listen and embrace our requests in our new contract. I ask, I ask the school committee to take pause and ask themselves, how does each of your proposals help our district? How will each of your proposals create opportunities for our students to increase their executive functioning skills? How do your proposals create a working environment that will attract highly-qualified educators to fill in the 80 vacancies right now? And lastly, how will your proposals support the retention of veteran teachers? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker is from East Providence.
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Keith Michon, Tryon Avenue.
Good evening. Keith Michon, President of the Fall River Educators Association. So, this weekend, I heard that Mayor Coogan would like us to take a vote. So, I take a lot of pride in the fact that I lead this union with the most democratic way possible, and take offense to any insinuation that myself or the bargaining team would be motivated by anything other than our demands of our members. With upwards of 50 members in each bargaining session, as many in planning sessions, over 400 members in our last meeting, and everyone here tonight, I think we know where they stand. Rest assured, our leadership is having one-on-one conversations with all of our members before our next session. So for our members to report, so far, our members report that the most recent response from the committee is incomplete. It fails to satisfactorily address the issues that we've raised. Our schools may be better off than they were 25 years ago, by some metrics, but our educators are not. Tonight, you will vote on contracts to fill union positions with non-union consultants. Not cheaper, not better, not likely to remain in the district when their contract is up and give our students stability. Why? Because we can't fill the open positions that we have. We need to seriously consider the proposals that have been made. We're making very strong attempts to improve retention and recruitment in this district, and we haven't seen the same from the committee. Frustrations are growing. Show your employees that they are respected and they are valued. Thank you.
I'll need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker, from Westport.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Carrie Brum, Shannon Drive, Westport, Mass.
Good evening. I'm reading a letter tonight on behalf of another teacher. Dear School Committee, I've been an L-teacher for 11 years, 10 of which were in the Fall River Public Schools. Throughout my time, each and every single school year, I've been faced with a hurdle due to state... due to staff shortages, and yet continue to stay and service this community because I myself am a product of the Fall River Schools and I love this community, the students and my MLL families. My first year, 2014, began as a parrot in a foundational classroom at Letourneau. Within the first eight weeks of school, I transitioned to a grade-five math and science teacher for mainstream and foundational students. Why the change, you may ask? Because the grade-five teacher quit within five weeks, and those students had a substitute for three weeks. Before the principal realized, I held my elementary license and Volin told me to take it as a favor to him. Second year, Sylvia, the sole L teacher for grades K to 5, began the year with approximately 60 students and ended with nearly 80. One person, six grade levels, 80 students. I'm sure you can imagine how many minutes of service those students were actually getting. Third and fourth years, same school, still alone with a similar caseload, began running the numbers and advocating for another L teacher, finally receiving a second L teacher in my fifth year, one who we had to share with Tanzy. Three and a half hours of help a day didn't make much of a difference in service minutes to our kids. Year six, decided to leave the district to go to a suburban district. I was the sole L teacher, K to 8, with a caseload of seven students. Very different than the 80 I was used to, but deep down, I realized that this city girl needed to be back in the city she loved. Year seven, Green, height of COVID, returned as one of two L teachers. The day before school started, I was told I needed to shift to the kindergarten foundational room as the classroom teacher because they didn't fill the position and school started the following day. After three months, a parrot moved into the position and I returned to my original position, but my partner L teacher remained in the foundational room that they forced her into, so now it was just me. Only three of our six grade levels were being serviced. This lasted all year. Year eight, same school, one of two L teachers for the first three months of the school year, until the other L teacher left the district. Alone with the entire building again, three grade levels not being serviced. Year nine, same school, missed the first three months because I was on maternity leave, which I came back from two weeks early to save sick days in case I needed them for my newborn. I was also asked to mentor two foundational teachers in our building, which I was doing remotely while on maternity leave. This quickly became four mentees because the other two had a mentor teacher who left the district about four months into the year. Three grade levels to service, four teachers to mentor. I'll skip ahead, there's a little bit more. And here is the age-old question, why did and why do I stay? I stay because I'm committed to this community and our students. If this doesn't prove it, I don't know what will. This is the same level of commitment I see in the majority of my colleagues. They've been here for the long run. They do not go to work and have it easy. They have challenges every day, covering vacant classroom teacher positions when positions are not filled. They're beyond flexible for the sake of our students. And all of this is the reason our teachers need to be valued, because they're giving it all each and every day, something I'm not sure you can say you're doing, giving it your all in terms of fighting for our salaries. Thank you. Thank you. Crystal Brosnahan, L teacher.
Next up, Josh Lopetear, Deval Street, Fall River.
Three minutes, please, Josh. Last Tuesday, I was one of close to 50 educators who was present at the bargaining for the contract. My colleagues and I worked a long and tiring day of school, and instead of going home to our families, we went to Morton Middle School because to us, making sure that we could secure a contract that retains teachers and keeps our schools afloat is of the utmost importance. I was dismayed to hear you, Mr. Mayor, in an interview last week paint our bargaining team as being unwilling to meet because many of our bargaining members had vacations scheduled for the summer. Who could have seen that one coming? When your bargaining team has canceled a session in late May with five hours' notice, when your bargaining team was unavailable for extra sessions in June, we didn't make a stink that your team wasn't serious about settling a contract. We're teachers. We understand that things happen. But if you want to complain that we haven't been meeting more, start by utilizing the time you have productively. Last week in that auditorium, your bargaining team sent a loud and clear message to our membership. Our team had previously requested responses to outstanding proposals, many of which your side has been holding on to for quite some time. We requested more detailed financial information so that we could thoughtfully consider how our proposals could be adjusted to reach some common ground. Your team presented us with a thick packet of proposals, which gave us some hope that you were serious about actually getting a contract settled. That packet contained 60 proposals, only nine of which were new positions that you had. I counted. The rest of the packet was just a repeat of the months of agreements, holds, and noes without any new questions or comments. We spent hours in that room for your bargaining team to waste our time recapping things we were already there for. There was also no mention of the total financial picture in the packets that we were presented, no way for us to make movement towards finding a compromise. On top of the actual issues, your bargaining team has routinely taken to lecturing your employees as if we don't know what bargaining looks like, or tell us that you're offering the best cola in the Commonwealth. Well, this was after news last week that Salem offered its teachers more money and more parental leave. Now, I try to be one to assume the best in people, right? Maybe your people weren't aware of this news, but even after we pointed it out, the lie was repeated often. But our teachers can read the news, and we can do math. When your team lies to us or talks down to us, they're speaking with your voice. When your team wastes our time, you're the ones wasting our time. When your bargaining team says you should have less prep time, you should have to do homework for your meetings, you should have to waste time filling out extra lesson plan paperwork, it's you telling us that. So as a teacher and a voter in Fall River, I ask each and every one of you up there, if you care about your employees and you care about the students, tell us why you think these are reasonable things to ask when we can't fully staff our schools and we can't retain the staff we have. If it wasn't insulting enough that you would make these proposals in the first place, they're still on the table almost eight months into bargaining. Putting aside all the financial issues, we are nowhere close to a contract as long as those things are still on the table. Your bargaining platform, based on all those proposals we've seen, is nothing short of a disaster for everyone in our schools. Please, send your team back to the bargaining table ready to make a deal. Don't waste our time.
I'll need a motion to waive the rules. The next speaker is from Swansea.
Still moved.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Rachel Martin, Oak Street, Swansea.
I am going to be under the three minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school committee. At the July 15th School Committee meeting, the discussion regarding Mr. Ken Pachico's raise was addressed after the executive session. During this discussion, there was some debate about the appropriateness of the raise. In particular, Mr. Corey, who voted in favor of the pay increase, remarked, "A person in that position," referring to Mr. Pachico, "we just voted for the proper salary range in today's economy." Now, no, I'm not here to dispute Mr. Pachico, his work, or his salary at all. Rather, I am here to highlight an important point. The same level of consideration and respect extended to Mr. Pachico is what we as educators are looking for. I don't know how the amount of the increase was decided, but I'm going to assume that he didn't have to bring graphs and charts and funding source documents to prove that he is indeed worth the salary that he now earns. However, these are the hoops that the educators and the bargaining team have been forced to jump through in seeking a fair and competitive wage. Simply stated, we are asking for a salary that reflects today's economy and the conditions, and a salary that is competitive with people in nearby cities in similar positions. If this district is committed to recruiting and retaining high-quality educators and finally filling the many vacancies, it is essential to come to a fair agreement that addresses the deserved salary correction. This matter has been discussed extensively at school committee meetings, advisory meetings, city council meetings. We know that you know we are paid less than we're worth. We know that you know we're paid less than educators in nearby districts, and we know that you know that it's a major contributing factor to why we have so many vacancies. We've heard you say it many times. But now it is time to move behind discussion, move beyond discussion, and take the necessary action. Let us agree to a fair contract so that we can all shift our focus back to what matters the most, the students. Thank you.
I need a motion to waive the rules as the next speaker is from Brockton.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Robert Gorman, Coeyside Drive, Brockton, Mass.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm gonna need all of your help at some point as well, folks. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school committee. Throughout the bargaining process, your attorney has garnered himself a certain level of ire from the membership. He's been described as discourteous, as misleading, and at times disrespectful, but no matter how the membership perceives him to be, I've started reminding them, as I've had to remind myself, that this isn't personal for Attorney Assad. He is on your payroll, and he's very good at his job. You see, he has no skin in this game. He gets to bill his hours no matter how this turns out. No, the key thing to remember about Attorney Assad is that he is the executor of your will. When he filibusters by reciting nearly all of the proposals on the table, none of which were considered to be the meaningful financial proposals we were promised, when he wastes our time, you waste our time. When he claims that your cola offer is the best in the Commonwealth and lies to the bargaining team, you lie to the bargaining team. When he claims that our union president, the man we elected to execute our will, is pandering thereby disrespecting our union, when he disrespects our union, you disrespect our union. And boy, do we feel disrespected. How crazy is it that we're fighting to be here? We're fighting to have it make sense to stay in this district. I attend every bargaining session looking for you to make it possible for me to stay here. I came to this district with the intention to stay for a year and make, and I shopped around for a better position elsewhere. At the time, the district was only a couple of thousand under comparables. I stayed eight more years. I came to this district with the lowest expectations, and I was astounded by how warmly I was received, by the sense of community the teachers in my department had fostered, by how great the kids are here. The salary has gotten to the point where you're scaring people away. Veterans are getting scared away. I'm almost scared away. There are teachers out there that will never get to see how great the schools in Fall River here can be because you can't pay for rent with passion and dedication. Or fill up on gas with a warm smile and a pat on the back. What it does take is investment in this city's future. That's what we're all here fighting for. We believe in what this school district is capable of, so we fight for it. We believe that this city can invest in its future and attract the best teachers to help mold the best future citizens and taxpayers if it chooses to, so we fight for it. This union and many other unions have taken up the mantra, and help me out here, folks, when we fight...
We win!
When we fight...
We win!
When we fight...
We win!
We don't win just because we decided to fight. We fight because the cause we take up is just, and there is no other option. So please, instead of being oppositional and filibustering and playing games, fight with us for the future of Fall River.
Next up, we have a couple of letters that were submitted. I'm gonna have Deb read the first one. It's from Kristen Anderson, Robeson Street, Fall River.
Good evening, school committee members. Hello again. For some reason, we keep running into each other in these meetings. I am here to express deep concern regarding the ongoing neglect of fair compensation for our dedicated educators. Despite their commitment to shaping future generations, they continue to face stagnant wages that do not reflect the increasing demands of the profession. Failing to implement necessary pay corrections sends a message to disrespect undermining their value and contribute, contribution to the community. This inequity not only affects their morale, but also jeopardizes the, the quality of education we provide. We must prioritize fair compensation to retain and honor the professionals who are the backbone of our school district. Without them, there would be no need for a school committee. I am 19 years old in college, but in the last few months, I've spoken out at multiple meetings about a few issues. I bring this up as I've spoken on personal experiences and on behalf of future teachers of the district, and when I speak, I see you guys listen and really pay attention. I don't know if it's because you're younger or if it's because when I was in school, I had spoken to you and made those connections. Either way, I appreciate it and need you to listen to these teachers. They are struggling, and you are choosing to let this go on. I am hurt because I have seen some of my favorite, most memorable teachers at this very podium begging for an increase so they can provide for their families, give back to their students, and just live. Please think about this. How can our teachers live on these wages? Why are highly skilled professional teachers with master's degrees having to work second and third jobs to live? How are teachers prepared to teach their classes if they're stretching themselves so thin? When are they supposed to spend time with their own family and children? I keep saying I wanted to come back to Fall River to teach. Ever since I was little, I planned on teaching here, in the district that I grew up, but in, but how can I? How can I live with these wages? Why would I want to work with the school committee that disrespects and humiliates educators in bargaining? We need to, we need this contract to be ratified now, not tomorrow or in a few weeks, but now. These educators have eight days with, have been working eight days without a contract. The school year has started. Don't make this harder for our students and educators. Find a way to work it out. Thank you for your time.
The last letter is from Rebecca Smith, Rolling Green, Fall River. Three minutes, please, Deb.
Good afternoon. I am writing in regards to the new past, new rule passed by the school committee regarding the no-phone policy. I would like to start by saying I agree that these young adults shouldn't be using their phones in class unless allowed by a teacher. I also agree that there are social benefits in limiting access to devices. However, I have some serious concerns that arise as a result of denying students access to their phones at all times throughout the day. I would love to have a conversation with the board in an effort to help me understand how the following concerns will be addressed. One, given the recent trend in school shootings, I am sure you understand the concern that phones provide access to students in the event such as a tragedy were to occur in our area. How will the students call for help should they see an intruder? What safety or additional emergency alert systems have been put in place that allow a student to sound the alarm if an intruder is identified? Students should feel safe and confident knowing they were able to call for help instead of hoping someone with the phone sees or hears of the threat. Two, these bags block out the phone so that there was, if there was a shooting or a child went missing, you can't access their location. This is a real concern. Three, phones being in an unmarked locked bag makes it, makes it convenient for them to be stolen since everyone has the same bag. Has there been thought to putting some form of name tag or personal identification on the bags to reduce theft? If stolen, how will the student be compensated? Four, a blanket policy that provides no access to phones at all does not allow students to become accountable and responsible for their actions. Self-control is a learned behavior. Instilling consequences for actions and sticking to them consistently helps kids learn that choices have natural consequences. This does not, this, this does take effort by the teachers' faculty, but I do believe it is worth, it is a worthy cause, and you probably believe, and same otherwise, you don't be, and wouldn't be doing the job you are doing. Five, if students allow, if students wants to check in with their parents for any reason, they should be allowed to during their lunch break. Additionally, many times, students are sent to the CAF because there isn't a teacher available to teach class.
Given, given my above concerns and experiences, I do not believe taking the students' phones, putting them in a locked bag is the answer, but rather consistency in consequences. If a student is caught using their phone, they should have consequences. I have spent time talking to many teachers on this issue, and their challenge was lack of consistency.
of consistency and support in how the offense was dealt with. When the VP office does not support the teachers in their reprimand, it perpetuates a culture of disobedience. I appreciate you taking the time to read through my concerns and look forward to hearing how the board will be addressing them.
Thank you. Attorney Assad would like to talk a little bit about negotiations from our perspective. Attorney Assad, let's be respectful, folks. We don't try to interrupt you guys.
What I'd like to do, Mayor, is to advise the committee as to where we are in the negotiations.
Great.
At the present time, we have on the table for steps one to eight, 7% in the first year, 5% in the second and third years. With respect to those in steps nine through 12, we have 8% in the first year, 5% in the second and third year. That does not include the automatic 5% that, the step increases that come for those who are in steps one through 11. Please, if I could, if I could, if I could. Basically, this is the best offer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
All right, come on, guys.
This is, you know, if I could just continue, okay?
Just let him finish.
This is exactly, this is exactly what happened at our last meeting, correct? When the cat calls came out. So, let me just have, let me finish. We allowed you to speak.
Absolutely.
If you could just let me finish, okay? With respect to, with respect to Salem, the, one of the comments that was made by the district, it came out in an article, states that the, the investment they made will necessitate significant cuts and hard decisions over the next few years. The offer that the school committee has put on, there would be no cuts. As we all know, there were many, many jobs and positions that were put on in the last three years. Matter of fact, there's over 500...
Hey, guys, guys, you gotta let him talk. That would only be fair, but, okay. I don't, I don't think this is, I don't want people doing this when you're speaking. Let's be fair and let him finish, please.
One of the main issues that we have in the negotiations with the union is the fact that the disparity in the income between what our district has paid over the number of years and what other communities have received. The issue is not the fact, and we've heard a couple of times that it was a bad contract and it's not gonna happen again. That's not the case. Case is, you were represented by the same individuals, the FREA and the MTA, and they looked at every document possible over the last several years. They reviewed it with their financial teams. We reviewed it with our financial teams. The bottom line was, at the end of the day, everyone agreed as to what would be a fair contract based on what the affordability was for our community here in Fall River. Please, please.
All right. Please, could we let him speak, please?
Go ahead.
All right, no, he is trying. Please.
Yeah. The main thing is, look, we have consideration for teachers, students, no, let, let me finish, please. Teachers, students, the community of Fall River, everyone has a stake in getting this thing done. We have had this proposal on the table now since the 21st of August. We have not received a response yet from your union. You have not, we have not received a response from the union. We're hoping to have that response at the next session. And the bottom line is, folks, that at the end of the day, there will be a contract. We're gonna work together, we're gonna work together for the students, for the teachers, and for our community. We're gonna get back to the bargaining table, and we're gonna work this thing out.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, let's go. All right, thank you. Next, hold on, we're back on the meeting, guys. Next item, next item up on the agenda, recognition awards. There are none tonight. Subcommittee report, we have one subcommittee report, parent and community outreach, subcommittee vice chair, I mean, I'm sorry, subcommittee chairman, Colin Dias.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the subcommittee meeting of the parent and community outreach subcommittee, we had a great presentation with many different parent-teacher organizations, learned their structure and learned some of their strengths and weaknesses, and I thought it was very informative for myself, for the committee, and for each other. I think they learned a lot from each other. There are two items before the committee tonight that was referred out by the subcommittee. I can go more into detail when those items come up on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Superintendent, please.
Yeah!
Okay, we gotta go back to the meeting, yeah. Superintendent's report, Superintendent Curly, school opening update and hiring, and another one. Go ahead.
Sure. So, as you know, for most of our students, today was day seven and the start of our first full week. To date, we have 11,110 students enrolled in, in our seats here in the district. A point of pride for us in the opening has been the average daily attendance. To date, it's been 93.1% across the district, and I just wanted to acknowledge some schools that are topping the charts. 97.2% at Tanzi, 96.4% at Green, and at 95.6%, we have Morton, Spencer, Borden, and Our final site to open is the Early Learning Center at Bishop Connolly, and that is set to open tomorrow, so we'll be opening, opening that site and welcoming those students tomorrow. I do want to give a hiring update. Since our last meeting, schools and human resources, our schools and our human resources department have been really busy onboarding 124 new hires, the largest numbers of whom have been teachers, 72, and paraprofessionals, 36. During that same timeframe, we did have 19 resignations and 21 retirements. As of today, we do have 133 openings of teachers, administrators, and paraprofessionals in the district, including 71 teachers, four administrators, and 58 paraprofessionals.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia.
Can we please make sure that we have decorum? Superintendent is talking, just please let her speak. It's a little out of hand now.
I have, I have asked them for respect.
I know, just be...
We don't interrupt any of this, hold on, see again, that's not what it is. That's not what this is about. We're back into the regular school committee meeting right now. I'm asking you, please, respect the meeting, let it go along. We have work to do. We appreciate you all coming out tonight, but at the same time, interrupting other people is, got nothing to do with any of the teachers I ever knew. Go ahead, I'm Dr. Curly.
So, the last piece of today's update is around our parent information sessions with respect to the cell phone policy and the implementation of yonder pouches. We do have six sessions that are coming up at each of the schools that we'll be implementing, and I just wanted to review for people here and those at home who may have missed some of the announcements. Six information sessions related to the cell phone free policy. During these sessions, district and school administrators are going to present research and data collected that led to the policy decision. We'll be reviewing the implementation plan for each school and answer frequently asked questions as part of the presentation. Staff is going to be available to meet one-on-one with folks after the session ends to any, answer any personal questions that people may have that weren't previously answered during those info sessions, and I just want to review the dates. On September 10th, we actually have two meetings. One of them is at 4:30 at Doran, and the other at 5:00 PM at CUS. On September 11th, we have another two meetings, 4:30 PM at Morton Middle School, and at 5:30 at Henry Lord Community School. September 16th is the day of Durfee High Schools, that's at 5:00 PM, and on September 17th, at 4:30 PM, Talbot Middle School will have their information session. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item number seven, oh, student comment, we do not have a student comment tonight, but item number seven, we have six sets of minutes to approve. Oh, four, two of hold, I'm sorry, the last two are held. So, we have 7-1, approval of the minutes for the special meeting of the subcommittee from 6:5. 7-2 is the approval of the regular school committee minutes from 6:10. 7-3 is the approval of the minutes from the instructional subcommittee, 6:17, and 7-4 is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of the subcommittee on 6:27.
Motion to accept all four, Mayor.
Second. We have one issue we have to take care of before, we have a motion on that. The minutes of 6:17 were tabled, we need a motion to take them off of the table first.
Motion to take off the table, 6:17.
Any discussion on 6:17 coming off the table? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, back to the approval of all four.
I have a motion.
7-1, 7-2, 7-3, 7-4, Ms. Larrabee made a motion.
Second.
I have a second discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eight is the approval of some travel requests. Chief Information of Scott Cabral has some, is there any discussion on the travel requests for Mr. Cabral? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. We have two to accept tonight. Can I get a motion, a second, on those, and then have Superintendent explain? I have a motion.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Superintendent, could you explain those two donations?
From the EOS Foundation, the Fall River Public Schools accepts a donation of $4,000 to be used at the discretion of the superintendent. And from the Victory Church, senior pastors Joe and Meredith Canto, Morton Middle School accepts a donation of 30 brand-new book bags filled with school supplies.
Thank you. Item 10 is the approval of grants. We have two grants listed here. Do we have any discussion or holds on either of the grants? Gleam and Commonwealth Preschool Partnership.
Motion to accept both.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion, hearing none. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 11 is the approval of contracts. We have a number of them there, and as we traditionally do, I believe we'll take them and, and hold on any that anybody has any concerns on. Mr. Dias?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to place a hold on Yonder and Sunbelt.
Yonder and Sunbelt, we're holding, Yonder and Sunbelt under grant contracts. Anything further? I'll take a motion, a second, on the others, please.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. On Yonder, Mr. Dias?
Thank you. I have a question as to where we're going to be placing the, the stations to, like, undo the magnets. Where would they be placed throughout? I'll, I'll say every school, but like, we, I don't know if it's like a general idea, if we're gonna place them at certain spots, like, when you come in, when you come out, or are there certain, certain areas? I did receive a few complaints, well, questions in regards to Durfee, so if we could, if you could let us know where they're going to be placed at Durfee, if you have a general idea?
I, I can give a general overview and just say that, that the idea is not just to have them at the exits when students are leaving the building, that they will be on multiple floors so that students will have plenty of opportunities before even entering the main floor, the bottom floor of the building, to unlock, unlock their pouches. And certainly, the idea is to have as, you know, as many as we can throughout the building, with the expectation that with some of them being portable, we'll be able to move some of those around when we see that there's a need in some areas of the building, you know, needed more than in other areas of the building.
Okay, thank you. And I did receive some ideas from a few parents on the placement. Some parents believe they should be placed in the lunchroom and give the opportunity for students to be able to text their parents, guardians, loved ones, if there's a need, and also in the office. Is there any, do you know for sure at Durfee, we're gonna have it in those locations?
So, during the school day, there is not any plan to have set locations where students are able to unlock their pouches and use their phone at their discretion? Certainly, students who are, who need to call home or make an important phone call would be able to access phones in their grade-level offices and things of that nature.
They are able to have, so a student is able to go into their main office and be able to unlock their phone and be able to call their parents?
Not to unlock their phones, but they would have access to a phone during the school day during, if there is an emergency and they need to reach someone outside the building.
Thank you. I, again, I hold the opinion that this policy needs to be looked at again. I think there should be some exceptions. One, in the main office, for students to be able to reach out to their parents, and two, in the lunchroom. So, I won't be voting for this today, and, and again, for the policy, I think we should really take another look into the logistics of this. Thank you.
So, any other questions? Can I get a motion and a second on Yonder?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The next one, you had a hold on, Mr. Dias, Sunbelt.
Thank you. So, just wanna get a general idea. Again, a little bit new to this, so with Sunbelt, we're hiring six paraprofessionals. Is it typical that we hire paraprofessionals from a third-party company, or is that something where, that's new?
It's not new for this year. We often partner with outside agencies and for hard-to-fill positions, specifically in the Special Education Department.
And just for the community's identification, why is, so where would these six paraprofessionals be placed?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I will take a look to see if it's in, included here.
Spencer Borden, Letourne, and Sylvia.
Oh, okay.
Is it, is there, just looking at the price tag, is there like a cost savings from going with a third-party company?
There is not a cost savings.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to table at this time. I think we should really look at hiring in-house. I'll make a motion to table.
Hearing no second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia.
Just, my opinion on these positions is that these are, it doesn't say it in our notes here, but I'm pretty sure from past experience, that these are highly specialized classrooms that have a need of children, that we need to provide a service, and that's the reason why we have to go outside to get these folks. It has nothing to do with the amount of money. We have to pay more when you go to a consultant, whether that's for a speech pathologist, a teacher, a para, whoever it is. You're paying more for the individual, absolutely, but the need is there. That's the reason why this is here. It's not because people wanna just pay somebody extra through a third party. This is out of true student need necessity, and I wanna make that clear. That's the reason why I'm gonna be supporting this, and in the future, hopefully, we won't have to do this. But we need to staff these buildings so that children have somebody in front of them that's qualified to work with them. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Anything further on this?
That's the reason why I'm going to be supporting this and in the future, hopefully, we won't have to do this. But we need to staff these buildings so that children have somebody in front of them that's qualified to work with them. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Anything further on this? I have a motion and.
No, I need a motion.
I need a motion, a second.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, second. Deb, please call the roll on Sunbelt.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 12 is a discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of Heidi Turpining, nurse for the Florida Public Schools, and Nayavisha Garcia, LPN District Wide, as presented by Mary Gustaf, Director of Nurse.
Chairman?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Agia?
We went over the, I didn't, I don't think I missed it, the continuations?
Yeah.
We just did Sunbelt, I believe.
Oh. I thought we did all the grants except for, you mean, we should have took continue? I thought when we did them all, we did them all.
I thought we always broke them up, but if.
I'll go, Mr. Agia is making a point. We'll hold on item 12 right now. Continuation, anybody want to hold a grant on any of paper education?
Paper, please.
Paper, please. Any of the others?
Motion to approve the others.
Okay, motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Discussion, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
Just, I was trying to follow along when we pulled something, but I think when we put it on an agenda, it, we put us in a bind with what to do and how to remove it, but if you think it's fine, it's fine. But when, once it's on an agenda, two days ago was fine, now something happened. I think there needs to be a process to take it off because right now, we're only voting on half of what's here, so whatever the committee members want, but just a point of.
Mr. Assad, do we have to table?
I believe that the matter, my understanding is it's not being tabled.
No, it's just being held.
Okay, the fact that it's not called, I think is sufficient.
Thank you. Okay. 12-2 is a discussion and vote to approve the revised academic calendar 2425, as presented by Dr. Currie.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Third.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion, hearing none.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Dias.
If the Superintendent is able to in public forum, can we have an explanation why we're tabled?
No. Not in public forum.
Okay. Deb, could you call the roll on Ms. Garcia?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, welcome aboard.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
Just, I was trying to follow along when we pulled something, but I think when we put it on an agenda, it, we put us in a bind with what to do and how to remove it, but if you think it's fine, it's fine. But when, once it's on an agenda, two days ago was fine, now something happened. I think there needs to be a process to take it off because right now, we're only voting on half of what's here, so whatever the committee members want, but just a point of.
Mr. Assad, do we have to table?
I believe that the matter, my understanding is it's not being tabled.
No, it's just being held.
Okay, the fact that it's not called, I think is sufficient.
Thank you. Okay. 12-2 is a discussion and vote to approve the revised academic calendar 2425, as presented by Dr. Currie.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Third.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion, hearing none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-3 is a discussion and vote to approve the second read of the technology plan, as presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Cabral, please come to the microphone. Mr. Agia?
Just a question on, at the subcommittee meeting, I believe, and we had mentioned some, making a few changes to the original document, and then, I believe, at the last meeting, we talked about the same. Were those changes implemented?
So that, we are working on them. CFO and I are going to sit down and strategically plan out, you know, cost and pricing for end-of-life cycle. I know that's something that we talked about, that you wanted to see more of a budget towards the five-year plan of technology, and we're in the process of it, but I will say with the opening of school, it sat on the back burner to try to get the buildings open, so we're in process. Next subcommittee meeting that we have, we'll have more information for you.
So it's, it's still a one-year plan?
Correct.
The only thing I, you know my stance on it, at the subcommittee, we talked about it being, one year is fine, but we also need to have a longer-term plan as part of this actual document. And I don't see it here. That's a little disheartening that the subcommittee meeting was four months ago, and quite honestly, this has been going on for way too long. I don't think the contents of what it says is bad, just that when subcommittee meets to make recommendations to their Superintendent, I personally want them to be followed. And whether that's a bullet point, I think we even talked about it at a meeting, and said we need to add a slide or we need to add something to reflect on the long-term nature of the situation as well. That's not here, and that's disappointing. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Any further questions for Mr. Cabral? So, I need a second.
No, we have a motion.
I have a motion, a second, on the technology plan, as presented by Mr. Cabral. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-4 is a discussion and vote to approve the revision of the cell phone-free schools policy, as presented by Dr. Amy Bronhardt, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Strategic Integration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the cell phone policy revision? Mr. Dias?
Can we get a presentation by Assistant Superintendent as to what the changes are for the public?
Dr. Bronhardt.
The policy will, once approved here, will be up and visible for all families to be able to see on our website, but as noted in your handout, there were a few wordsmithing opportunities within the policy, particularly as it relates to the exemption part, to be certain that if we are making any exemptions, that that is connected officially through a student's 504 plan and/or IEP. And as you notice above the discipline matrix, we connected with Attorney Joyce to get a statement around discipline so that we are ensuring a fair implementation of the discipline matrix across the district.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. So with the changes that are in here, so the fifth and sixth offenses, they went from in-school suspension or Saturday school or one day of out-of-school suspension to possible, so.
Correct, because any time that we would impose an out-of-school suspension, there would have to be a hearing that takes place. And the former policy did not pull that out explicitly, and so we wanted to be certain that it was clearly stated that when you get to that level of a consequence on the matrix, that nothing is automatic, everything will be taken in context of the situation at hand.
Okay, so there's even, so there's a hearing for out-of-school suspension?
Correct.
Well, for, because I see under like the in-school suspension, Saturday school is so, it's a disciplinary, there's still hearings for that as well.
There are not hearings, not official hearings. The only time that official hearings are held are for out-of-school suspension. However, we're still looking to extend the courtesy of communicating with families and taking into all consideration scenarios that occur that might put a student in a place of violating the policy.
The reason I mention that, because under the fifth offense, possible one day in-school suspension or Saturday school, disciplin, discipline, I'm sorry, you meant disciplinary hearing, caregiver meeting, suspension letter, so, says that there should be a hearing in the policy. I just don't want parents to, you know, read the policy and, I just don't understand like why that would be in there, then.
To be in accordance with the law. It was the lawyer's recommendation to include the language, and we just want to be certain that we are giving due process, most specifically even as it relates to in-school suspension.
So there will be hearings if there's an in-school suspension?
Yep.
Okay. Again, I think we need to go back and have a discussion to see, again, if there's ever an emergency and making, at least making sure if a student is able to go into the office, to make sure they have access to a cell phone. I don't want to hear in a few months from now, my son or daughter needed to use the phone and there was no one in the office or they refused to give me this, like, use of a phone if there is an emergency, something, is that something that's like?
Just so that you do note, just to also clarify that piece, every single one of our grade offices will have a magnet in the office, and so as with all, you know, school implementation of policies, if the vice principal feels as though the family need, the student needs to use their phone to contact the family, the vice principal or the principal will make that direct decision. But they will be available in the offices so that in extreme circumstances, if the case arises, a student would be able to have access.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Deb, oh, Mr. Agia, I'm sorry.
Just two things on that one. I do think that we need to be cognizant of the administration's daily schedule and what they have to deal with, so we cannot be bombarded with students just coming in and saying, I want to call home on my cell phone. If it's truly emergency, of course, the staff will allow them to do it, but I think we have to be careful of supporting the administration here and the implementation of this program with fidelity. And we talked about the inconsistencies in the past, you've owned them, but now we're going to do this, and I think we all have to be standing together and say, we're going to do it with fidelity. The other piece, I just think for the edification of the public, is the moving the date back from September 23rd to October 8th, based on not getting the stuff in in time and whatever, back orders, but I think that's also important to note, that we're going to have a few more weeks to get this ready to roll out, and I, for one, am going to stand with you and support you, and I think it's a tall task for all the schools to do, but we need to work together and back the people up when they're going to make this determination.
I think it's important to note and just give credit to all of our principals and their teams. I had an opportunity last week to tour all of our buildings and meet with all of our leaders and their teams around a very detailed implementation plan. I was overwhelmingly proud of our leaders because of the thoughtful energy that went into every developmental piece of the plan, and I just think they deserve, you know, all the credit because all of that was done simultaneously with the launching of the school year. And not one stone was unturned, and quite frankly, each school got stronger from the other schools because we were sharing best practice of what folks were coming up with across the district. So it was very enlightening and it was certainly an exciting opportunity for folks to come together in one effort to take this on and to really support our schools with a transformation.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dias?
Just one, just one more request, if we could, the committee can be provided with the questions that were handed out to parents. I received a lot of complaints as to the questions that they were too generic, just for our edification. If we could see those questions that were sent out to parents, that'd be very helpful.
We can share you the website because they're all listed on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12-5 is a discussion and vote to approve the creation of a Citizens Advisory Committee, as referred by the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee and presented by Colin Dias School Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to request that this actually be referred back to the subcommittee. There's still discussions to be had with this, and I'd like to get more input from my members of my own subcommittee on this. There's still work to be done on this, if, I'd like to make that motion at this time.
Second.
I have a motion to refer back, and I have a second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll on sending back 12-5 to the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-6 is a discussion and vote to approve to send a letter to the City Council to request the revision of Section 918 of the City Charter, specifically concerning the rules governing public comment and special meetings, as referred by the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee and presented by Colin Dias.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one, I believe, is ready to go. I believe it's quite a no-brainer. I believe it's quite a no-brainer. We have a section of our city's charter that limits individuals to come before the committee and speak. You should be able to speak on any topic you want, whether it be a special meeting, whether it be a full meeting. And we shouldn't leave archaic sections of the charter that needs to be revised in there. And we ran into the issue a few months ago, and individuals came from the union came before to speak about the mold issue as a special meeting. I think this is the right thing to do. So at this time, I'll make a motion that the school committee send a letter to the City Council to request a revision of Section 9-18 of the City Charter.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on that? Mr. Agia?
Just on the, I want to say that we had one time several years ago, the law changed related to citizen input time in a regular meeting. And maybe Attorney Assad can weigh in on this, but I thought it said something along the lines of that people can come and raise their opinions on anything they want before the meeting. So I think this in context of whether it's a city charter trying to limit the, what the school committee is going to hear as a charter, I don't necessarily think that makes sense. But can someone weigh in on what the legality of that is?
Mr. Assad.
Yeah, I was not part of anything to do with the charter and what the decision-making was. All I can say is that it might have been a situation where the actual parliamentary procedure may have ruled the day. Specifically parliamentary procedure, especially Robert's rules, if it's a special meeting, then that's usually what the issue is, is it's tailored to what is on the agenda. And I think that might have been the reason for it, but again, I don't know what their thought process was when they actually passed the charter.
Can we limit the topics and regular public citizen input time of a meeting? Can we legally do that? Yes or no?
No. A special or a regular?
No, a regular meeting.
No.
So I make an amendment to the motion that we utilize the citizen input minutes, citizen input policy of the Florida School Committee to all meetings, including specials.
Second.
Wait.
Wait a minute. We have a motion.
Can I just get a clarification?
Yeah, we have a motion and second on the table for the first one.
Yep, and I just made a motion to amend that motion, Mr. Dias' motion, because it's going to get to what his intent is.
So what you're basically saying is the rules that apply to our regular school committee meetings should also apply to special meetings so that, let's say, we're having a special meeting about whatever, a constituent can come in, or a teacher, or an educator come in and address any topic. It doesn't have to be that.
That's what my motion would be, in full transparency. So if we're going to be transparent in a regular meeting, I find no reason why we wouldn't be transparent in a special meeting, personally.
I thought they were the same rules.
Anything further? Deb, call the roll on the amended motion by Mr. Agia.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larevi?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
So are we voting to send a letter to this, am I voting to send a letter to the City Council right now? Is that what this is?
We're voting to follow the regular meeting rules that we have every time when we have a special meeting. For citizens' input.
And Attorney Assad, your opinion on that was?
With respect to a special meeting?
Is there anything wrong with doing that?
The rule is, parliamentary procedure is that it's limited to what is on the special meeting agenda. With respect to a regular meetings, as long as it's put in the jurisdiction of the committee.
Then they can talk. Okay, then I'm going to vote now.
Point of, point of.
Hold on. I'm voting no.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
If we're going to ask, if we're going to stop the vote to ask questions, I think we need to open it up so that people can give solid answers to what the questions were. That's all.
Okay.
So, related to this issue.
All right, related to this issue.
The reason why I made that motion was because Attorney Assad just stated, in a regular public meeting, it is illegal for us to limit the speech for anybody to come up and say anything they want as long as it's related to a school issue. That's what Attorney Assad said. So if that being the premise, that at a public meeting, we're all elected officials, and somebody wants to come up for citizen input time, they can raise anything they want as long as it's in the purview of the school committee. All I was mentioning was that we should have that same rule for the special meetings. If we truly want to say that we're transparent and want to hear from people, why in the hell would we not have a special meeting, have the same citizen input rules as the regular meeting? That's the only thing I'm asking. It's a no-brainer.
It did not pass. It went down two to four. Two yays, four nays. I don't know. I mean, we could bring it back another time, but tonight it did not pass.
So on the motion on the floor?
So, 12-7.
On the motion on the floor, Mr. Dias has a motion here.
Mr. Point of parliamentary inquiry, the amendment to change the citizen's input did not pass.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dias, go ahead.
And if I could take, you'll take the floor back through the chair, the attorney's side. Is it illegal for the school committee to hear citizens' input on any topic at a special meeting, any school-related topic at a special meeting?
It's not illegal. It's illegal is if you've actually broken the law. It is parliamentary procedure. It's also part of our charter right now, and as a result, the charter would control, irrespective of what the vote would be of the school committee.
Right, thank you. And so what the motion is that I made is to send, is to approve this, to send a letter to the City Council. The City Council has the authority to change the charter. They have to go through the home root process. All this is, is just send a letter asking them to change that section of the charter. If you don't believe individuals should come before the committee and speak on issues at a special meeting, you should vote no. I believe in the right for any resident, any citizen, or, well, we have people who aren't residents of the community to come to speak, but you get what I mean. For individuals to come before us and speak, and we have to hear them. I think that's the right thing to do. This is a charter that is severely flawed.
I don't disagree with that.
Severely flawed, and this is a section of the charter that just shouldn't be there. Again, I think there's other motives to why people are voting no, but again, the committee has their right. I'm going to vote yes because I believe in free speech for residents of our city. I yield.
Ms. Pereira?
So just to be clear, because I really don't like it when I vote and people tell me why I'm doing it. The reason I am sticking with parliamentary procedure when I thought about this is because there's a reason, as teachers and educators know, there's a reason we have rules. There's a reason it's for decorum. It's for getting work done. It's not that I don't want to hear what people have to say. There are many avenues in which anyone can reach out to any of us via phone number, via email, via coming to the meetings, whether it be a Subcommittee meeting or a regular school committee meeting. My thought process is that if we're having a special meeting, which we don't have too often, but if we're having a special meeting, it's because there's a topic of great importance, and that time of that meeting, in my opinion, should be dedicated to that topic. It's not that I don't want to hear what other people have to say. I think that the reason these rules were put in place was to keep a level of decorum. So we're having a special meeting related to a serious mold and health issue in our schools, I want that to be the topic of conversation for the meeting and have those comments and ideas. I don't want a group of people coming in and hijacking a meeting that was designed to discuss, let's say, the mold issue, to hijack it and talk about something else, because then that detracts from the big purpose we were there. I think that's the reason the rules were put in place. It's not to prevent people from talking. They have ample opportunity. It's to keep decorum, which is nice to have. So that's why I voted no, not because I don't want to hear people speak, just because I think there's a reason we have rules. So do I agree with everything in the charter? No. But guess what? They can do it, the City Council, that's their job. They can do a charter review, and they can make those adjustments. And if that happens, then I will follow those rules. This is the way every community, not every community, but the way the majority of communities hold meetings so that they can be productive and run smoothly. It's not about not wanting to hear what people say. It's about the right time and place for that, so that the discussion can be positive and can actually create good change and not just yelling. With that, I yield.
Mr. Agia?
So we also have policy made over the years and guidance for chairs and vice chairs for meetings, one of which is that we will have new business at every meeting, including a special meeting. We will also have new business at every special meeting as well that indicates topics that anyone could not anticipate within 48 hours of the meeting. But surprisingly, well, actually not surprising, this particular committee continually disregards that policy and just puts on an agenda to limit the actual scope only to that. Doesn't include new business, doesn't include anybody having an opportunity. So when we have a special meeting like we had several months ago, where the topic, something came up that we didn't anticipate coming up, we're now trying to jump all over ourselves to say, "We've got to waive the rules and do all this nonsense," rather than have it on the agenda that says we should have new business, or we should have people be able to come before us and speak. Theoretically, something could happen within 48 hours of a special meeting, a major issue. And we're all going to be sitting here, and no one on this stage can actually bring up the issue to try to fix it, because that's the way our system is being run right now. And that's why we should be having this open. So if somebody came before us on citizen input time at a special meeting with a legitimate concern, nobody can do anything. We're going to have another special meeting potentially to address something, because we don't do things the way we should as far as the leadership on this board. And it should be a new business, it should be 48 hours, and we should be allowing people to come up and speak. I don't know what people are so worried about and afraid about, why we can't let people speak at a special meeting. And Robert's rules or any of that stuff does not prohibit it. It's not illegal. All it is is a recommendation, and our policy supersedes Robert's Rules of Order. Attorney Assad knows it, and at the end of the day, we should be doing it. So I applaud Mr. Dias for bringing this up, and it's not going to go anywhere, because we already had four members that don't want to deal with it. But at the end of the day, I'm voting for this, and I'm supporting Mr. Dias. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, and I'm not going to belabor the topic, but just a few points. So at the special meeting that we had a few months ago in July, had nothing to do with the mold situation. We had several members from this, from the Health and Safety Committee come before us, and we almost shut them down. But again, I applaud the mayor. The mayor made the right choice by asking for a motion to waive the rules, and we allowed them to speak, even though it violated our city charter. But that was the right thing to do, and that was the constitutional thing to do, to be quite honest. I've come before this committee when, back in 2021, and I've had that same exact clause shoved right in my face when I spoke out against a former superintendent. So I just don't think we should, we should be fair across the board. If I can, again, through the chair, to attorney's side, if you don't have an answer today, I think we should research this. Is it constitutional and legal to have, in parliamentary procedure side, in the state of Massachusetts, because I know we're very liberal in the right way when it comes to our public input policies and the First Amendment, is it legal or illegal for us to hinder citizens' input, the only items on the agenda? I think that's something we should look into to get a legal opinion on, because I hate for a situation to come down the road, an individual comes down to speak, and then maybe the next chairman in five years from now shuts them down. We can't pick and choose when we're going to enforce that section of the charter, whether it's popular or expedient. We've got to be fair across the board. Attorney's side.
All I can say on that is that the charter, irrespective of any vote that the committee takes, the charter would control over what the actions of the committee could be. I think everyone understands the one time, and I've been here for a while now, it's the one time where it was a vote in the committee to waive the rules. It was an emergency situation that came up, and students and teachers were going to go into a room, into a building in a classroom that no one knew at the time that the vote was taken, if it was going to be safe or not. And I think that was the one and only time I've seen that waived. But once again, you could certainly do what you want in terms of the committee, in terms of a vote as to what the school policy would be, but it would be subject to and be controlled by what the charter would state on that. And I understand what your motion is, to send a letter, which doesn't really set a policy for the school committee, but the bottom line is, until that charter is changed, if there was an issue, that's what we'd control.
And just one follow-up question. So you believe Section 9-18 of the charter, that's legal?
Is what?
You think that, you believe that's constitutional?
I have no reason, I, first of all, I haven't, certainly haven't researched that, but I have no reason to believe it's not.
Can we make, I like to make a motion.
I have a motion and a second right now on the floor we haven't voted on yet.
Can I?
The motion was the original motion that Mr. Agia's amendment was attached to. We voted on Mr. Agia's amendment, and now the motion is on Mr. Dias's proposal 12.6.
We amended it.
We didn't amend it. The amendment didn't pass.
I'd like to offer another amendment that we asked the school committee attorney, or we asked our legal counsel, I know we have other legal counsel, or it could be whoever, to research the issue and see if Section 9-18 of the city charter is constitutional under state constitution and the federal constitution.
I think past practice indicates this simple request is enough.
I mean.
Assuming Attorney Assad would support that?
He made a motion to have Attorney Assad research 9-18.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second. Question?
Question, Mr. Agia.
Typically, Attorney Assad would just say, "Sure, I'll do that," and we don't need the motion, so.
He said typically.
If a committee member asks you for a legal opinion, would you need a motion in order to grant that? Or would you just do it based on?
It should be a motion, especially on this one. I just caution the committee, we could, I certainly can do the research and make a decision, but with respect to the charter, the individual that actually makes a decision on the legality of any issue is the corporation counsel. But we certainly can do a research here.
So if a committee member asks you to research an issue, you won't do it without a motion and a positive vote?
I didn't say that. I said it's more proper to do it that way with a vote.
But you won't not do it otherwise? You're not saying you wouldn't do it without a vote?
Okay, we have a motion. I don't have a second.
I did second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Agia seconded.
Can we reiterate the motion again?
The motion is, without touching the main thing, Mr. Dias asked Mr. Assad to research 9-18 related to the charter's rights to regulate speech at a special meeting.
Correct.
And this is an amendment?
This is, this is an amendment, it's almost separate from his letter, though, so I don't know where we are now, but.
You can't have two motions, but.
That's what I think.
Bring it up on the new business.
Yeah, we'll bring.
Mr. Mayor, I'll bring it up during new business.
Okay, let's do that. Let's vote on the original 12.6. Deb, can you call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larevi?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No. 12-7 is a discussion and vote to approve the request for qualifications engineering service provides study evaluation and recommendation for all buildings regarding the HVAC systems as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Pacheco.
So the request is twofold. The request is to go out for an RFQ, which would be a request for qualifications for engineering design, study work on all of our buildings for HVAC validity, basically taking a look at what we have, where we need to go to hopefully improve air quality throughout all of our buildings. I say twofold because there's a, the city about a year and a half ago went out for qualifications to have, for lack of a better term, a house doctor setup, where we would pick three to five companies as a bid, because it's a qualification and not necessarily price. So we would lock in three to five companies, and they would, in turn, for a period of five years, we would be able to use them to do this work. What it does is it saves six to, six weeks or so, maybe eight weeks, of the procurement process since they were already procured once. The topic for procurement was various services related to design and engineering qualifications. So that has already been done, but I'm leaving it up to the committee as to which direction they would like to go in. If they want to go out to for regular RFQ, then we would start that process. I would come back to the committee with the full package of what that RFQ looks like, and we would move forward with that particular piece.
Motion approved with a question?
I have a motion, Mr., do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. Agia.
Just a question on that, where I said negotiate the fee structure if we went the other way. What would the pay be? Would you, who would select, and what would the fee structure be for the, if you picked one of those five?
So no matter what would happen, the, if we, if we choose the second piece, actually if we choose either one, this committee would have to vote on a contract. So the contract would come before this committee to vote on. So if we, if it's a request for qualifications, request for qualifications is done by the Designer Selection Board, which is a board made up of different individuals on the city side. I usually sit on it or someone else, if there's a conflict, would sit on it from the school side. And that process would go the same exact way, but it was, the contract would still come here for negotiating of price. The request for qualifications and the Designer Selection Board would rate three, and then we would start with a rated number-one person, company, see whether or not that price came in at what we thought was a good price, and then move forward with that.
So you're going to have multiple people bid on it, put a proposal together, and then you're going to pick, the committee's going to pick somebody, and then we approve the contract?
Exactly. Now, that's already been done, as I said, so that, there is already five ready, and.
I think the timing makes sense. The only thing I would ask is, what do we currently have and what are we going to expect at the end of this? At the end of this, are we going to now see the status of every single HVAC, where it's going, how much it's going to cost to replace? Like, is that the scope of the work?
So the scope of work is probably going to be all of that that you just mentioned, plus the fact that where do we go tomorrow? Where are we going to be in a year from now? What can we do immediately to make the systems better? What would we be doing on necessarily a five-year plan and then full? This is a major project, so it is gradual, and it does have.
But we're going to get the full picture. It's not going to be at the end of this, next two years from now, saying, "We're going to do another study to figure it out."
Nope, this is the full piece.
Got it. Thank you. I yield.
I have a motion, Mr. Corey, I'm sorry.
So, Ms. Pacheco, this is going to provide us with a strategic plan?
Yes.
And looking at, looking at all of our school facilities down the road with regular checkups?
Yes.
Of HVAC issues, especially as they relate to mold? And so that there will be a constant check on all of our buildings. Is that what this is about?
So it's more than just mold, obviously. This is a complete air quality piece.
Yes.
So efficiency along with.
HVAC and all those other issues.
Yes.
And there'll be a complete check and report outs as issues arise to this committee at all times?
Exactly.
For the next number of years?
Yes. The report will be extremely comprehensive.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Deb, could I get a call?
If I could just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Corey.
I just needed which way we want to go. And so if we want to go with the current people who, the companies who've been selected to avoid the six or eight-week procurement piece, that would be one way. The second way would be to go out for a RFQ.
Was my motion on the first?
Second.
The first, the first part of it was the motion.
Mr. Agia's was on the first part.
Okay.
Mr. Corey?
So, Ms. Pacheco, with that in place, with our first option in place, do we retain the services, the consultation services of Mr. Terrell and people like that?
It's a totally different situation. Mr. Terrell's going to finish the project that he started for us, yes.
Will there be consultants like him available to us for the future?
So we're looking for a firm that will be able to do all of that work. So an engineering firm will also provide that study and follow-through and a pricing matrix so that we can look at, at the end of this, what kind of plan we're going to put in place and how we're going to fund it.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Okay, Deb, you want to call the roll, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawravy?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve, eight. It's a discussion and vote to approve the use of Duffey High School's Ray Street parking lot to hold the Holly, uh, Halloween drive-in movie night and trunk-or-treat event.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Um, I have a motion and a second and discussion. Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawravy?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, and this is a great night, guys. I hope everybody gets a chance to go by. A number of our community partners are there. We have a drive-in. It's Hocus Pocus Two. And again, there's a lot of kids from all over the city, so if you get a chance to go by, we'd appreciate it. Uh, there's a number of things for your information. We have retirements, resignations, um.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. I.
Second.
Regretfully, as you.
Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Agia.
I brought this up, uh, last month or two months ago, that we receive, uh, the appointments on this, for the edification of the public. I've asked for several months now, that when we have somebody appointed to a new position, that they also get listed. We on the school committee don't get notified when anybody gets appointed if they're already working in the school system. And I think that's the problem, not only for the, myself, but for the public. This, when we put somebody on here that gets appointed to a job, if they've left a job in one, they should be appointed, and they should go on the agenda for the public certification every time somebody's appointed. I've mentioned this for months, and it's still not happening. So I'd once again ask that that happens, notifying the school committee when someone gets appointed to a different position. Thank you.
Regretfully, there are a few death notices, but we can do them all at once. I have, um, a motion and a second on notifications. Deb, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawravy?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Uh, new business?
Thank you. Um, I, I had some, um, a second item I actually wanted to mention during, um, the superintendent's report, um, but it has to do with the Superintendent Friday, um, report to the committee. Um, I, I do have some concerns, um, over the Boston Globe article that was released, um, relating to, um, relating to, um, exclusionary timeouts in that South Coast Collaborative, which, um, we are a member of. Um, I was gonna request and ask the superintendent if, if she can report back to the committee if we can find out if, um, exclusionary timeouts are being used on Florida students. Um, I think it's something that's very important. And at the same time, um, 'cause this was an issue with the committee last year, and I'm sure it's gonna come up again, um, the Judge Rottenberg Center, and, and, um, I know they use, um, electric shock therapy as well, and that was an issue, um, that was brought up last year. If we can also, um, look into that same issue as well, whether, um, Florida students are, um, being subjected to those, um, practices, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Dias.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Mr. Dias?
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia.
We were gonna bring up an issue on new business, uh, Mr. Dias had.
I told Mr. Dias that I would be in the Corporation Counsel's office tomorrow, tell him to do a research on nine point one eight.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't announce that. You, you are correct. I did have a sidebar with him. Um, Mr. Di, uh, Mr. Assad, any reason for executive session?
Uh, yes, there would, ma'am.
Uh, you wanna give us the information?
Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes for August twenty-six, two thousand and four, special meeting of the committee, school committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement, including hearing grievances relative to all professional teaching employees of Florida school system, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational and physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Florida Educators Association, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Florida Administrators Association, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Florida school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter thirty-eights, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Florida school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter, uh, thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Florida school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees of the Florida school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local, Council ninety-three, Local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil clerical employees of the Florida school system represented by the Florida Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter twenty-one thirty-eight, uh, Chapter thirty-eight, Tr- Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Florida school system represented by the Florida Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Would we convene? There may and may not be statements at that time.
Thank you.
Motion to go into executive session?
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Um, Corey, discussion. Please call the roll to go into executive session. Uh, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawravy?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?